This is the August 8th, 2024 meeting of the on this planning board. Looks like they have everyone here tonight. First item was the minutes from the last meeting. Had a chance to review those. Really see anything change.
Got one question.
Let's get a motion first and then we can. Do we motion to accept the minutes? Don't move. Give her a second. Okay, Rick, second. Question, Ray.
Under new business five. Errand parody. On the second line. As opposed to client. Wouldn't applicant be more appropriate?
Yes, I'd say so. One of the things that the applicant. Any other comments on the minutes?
But I picked the typo. There's a typo. It's like this will be provided.
Anything else? If not, all in favor or accepting the minutes with that amendment? Those amendments?
One of them, everyone's staying.
Question was Dave and seconded by Miss Dave. Dave Mills, I'm sorry. All right. Um, we're just running through the old business. First, I think everything. Lake Star. Uh, we still have this tabled. They filed an amended plan. With E and P last week. I don't, I think everyone might've got a sent a copy by email of that. Anyway, that's where that is. Soul America Energy sent me an email. The woman, the young woman who has been sort of spearheading the project, at least as far as the minutes. I was informed is no longer with the company. So they asked for another month. They asked to be tabled to the September meeting. So do we have a motion to continue to table this matter to the September meeting?
I move that we table their request to the next meet, next month's meeting.
Second.
All in favor? Might have some other discussion later, but all right. Uh, so Paul Mills here. First on the errand parody. Amendment to the 2004 plan. Some of you may have heard Paul's and I talking before the meeting started. Think someone who got a notice picked up that one of the lots might've been disidentified. And I think Paul has sent in of an amendment to that application to refer to the correct lot. So the amendment is to revise lot lines by conveying 30 acres. The lot eight dash one from lot eight dash two. Those are the tax math references. Yes. I think it's the last meeting. Given the nature of this amendment. We waive certain requirements we ordinarily have for subdivisions. It seemed like fairly say, unimpactful change, basically just transferring some of the real estate to the budding lot. Is that correct, Paul?
That's correct.
Anything else you have to add?
No.
I suppose we still should go through the checklist, just in case. Subdivision one.
I don't have a subdivision one.
Let's see. Can refer to one, I think I have it in my computer. Criteria are just a little different. Subdivision checklist. I think, you know, hopefully if we get the new planner.
He's gonna have it.
We'll update some of these. Okay. Going through this checklist. All right, so do we have a motion? On whether this subdivision will result in undue water or air pollution? Track of this. Yes. Ray motion that was not is for seconds. Dave, I can. Any discussion, all in favor? Anemous. Um, will a subdivision have sufficient water available for the reasonably foreseeable needs of the subdivision?
I move that it could.
A mill second, any discussion, all in favor? Will the subdivision amended cause unreasonable soil erosion or reduction in the capacity of the land to hold water? So that a dangerous or unhealthy condition results?
I move that it will not.
Dave Mills, second, any discussion, all in favor? The subdivision caused unreasonable highway or public road congestion or unsafe conditions through use of existing and proposed highways and public roads.
I move that it will not.
Second by Dave Mills. Uh, any discussion? If not, all in favor? Um, will the plan provide for adequate sewage waste disposal? And not cause an unreasonable burden on town services for sewage disposal?
I know that it will not. It'd be just capable and won't cause any.
All in favor?
We got it.
Uh, will it cause an unreasonable burden on the town's ability to dispose of solid waste?
I move that it will not.
All in favor? Uh, will it have an undue influence or undue adverse effect on scenic or natural beauty, aesthetics, historic sites, significant wildlife habitat? Or rare and irreplaceable natural areas? Or any public rights for physical or visual access to the shore?
Move that it will not.
I'm second.
The birds have left.
All in favor? Uh, does the plan conform with the local regulations, ordinances and town comprehensive plan?
I move that it falls to regulations.
Second by Dave Mills, all in favor? Um, does the applicant have the financial and technical capacity to meet the above criteria?
I move that the applicant does have.
Second by David Mills, all in favor? Um, will the subdivision as amended adversely affect the quality of surface water? Or unreasonably affect the shoreline of ponds, lakes or wetlands?
I know we will not have any adverse effect.
Second, second by Dave Mills. All in favor? Uh, will the subdivision alone or in conjunction with existing activities adversely affect the quality or quantity of groundwater?
I know they will not.
All in favor? Does the plan provide that any principal structures will be constructed one foot above the hundred year flood elevation? I'm assuming that's it's not applicable. We'll say that one's not app- applicable. Has the plan identified all freshwater wetlands regardless of size?
I know that it has.
Second. All in favor? And has the plan identified any stream or brook within or abutting subdivision?
I know that it has.
And second by Dave Mills, any discussion? If not, all in famous. Has the plan provided for adequate stormwater management?
It has.
Second by Dave Mills, any discussion? If not, all in favor? Uh, has this subdivision as amended created lots with a depth of frontage ratio greater than five to one?
I know that it has not.
All in favor of that motion? Finally, will this subdivision amendment unreasonably increase the long-term cumulative effect of a great pond phosphorus concentration during the construction phase and life of the subdivision?
I know that it will not.
All in favor? Uh, so we have a motion to approve with our standard conditions?
I move that we approve this application with our standard conditions.
Any need for any additional conditions? Right, all in favor of approving it with standard conditions?
Steve, I abstain on all questions because I went here last meeting, so I don't have any information.
You have that, Larry abstained.
You took thing in your seat.
Three. Jake speak.
You have a pen. Well, you don't have that special pen.
No, you don't need a mild or pen.
Do you have a state of proof, Ken?
All, all my pens are state of proof.
One frost. One oak. Just to define. Dave, you voted at the last meeting.
I'm not, yeah, I didn't vote anything on this one.
Okay. So Bonnie can be voting.
And she voted. Yeah.
Yeah. You can find that point in your body. What's the Gmail address? Yeah, it's fine. Who came up without surprise? I did get a email from a while ago, which I can circulate to when the region the yards we have to reach. Bill was asked, both you for letting change in the business we have. Bill said, Paul, the next topic of the plan for the Dover Road Dover Drive property. Though he was there. I think he made a couple of oral comments. But just to bring everyone up to speed about what, what this application is about. Dover. This is to replace the existing camp. Now it looks like there might be some damage to it caused by insects to the existing camp. Uh, what's been going on over? And this is a beautiful building, looks like it's been there for a while.
It is beautiful. It's too bad.
Is that what it is? Yeah.
There's no way to move out of it.
You're gonna have to destroy the, that existing camp. And then build as we're facing it from the Wilson Pond. You want to move it basically to the left. And and a little bit back, but you've got that really significant hill behind you. My recollection is that and I think you mentioned it would need to happen, Paul, is do some stabilization of the bank?
Yes. I mean, over the years, as you saw, there is somewhat of a stone retaining wall that that in itself is there. By moving it although you're going to say to the left.
Yeah.
Away from the lake as much as we practically can. Then they have to be a again, another type of retaining wall. Probably, I mean, there's a lot of many different types of alternatives. Locks, I mean, for instance, what they're putting in down here at the fire museum.
Yeah.
It's one thing like you see the retaining wall if you go into Target or Lowe's or anything like that. So there, there's a lot of alternatives to do it. It wouldn't have to be high. But you've got to stabilize this whole thing. By moving this southerly. You're into part of this slope where the slope gradient isn't all that great as it is directly behind the as it is now.
And so where the existing camp is, is that gonna be revegetated?
Oh, yeah. I mean, that's the proposed camp is going to come southerly. If you see, it's shown on the plan there.
Yeah.
But it's still gonna occupy a portion of the footprint of the existing camp.
Okay.
So that portion of the existing camp would of course be filled in.
Yeah.
Seated and revegetated with appropriate vegetation.
Um, and I think I saw there was some gutters on the existing camp. So the, one of the one of the typical concerns. Obviously watershed has is that water coming off the roof. Be channeled in such ways that it doesn't end up in the pond and affect the phosphorus. And, uh, so we had another site visit before. Where you have that email. So what, what do you recommended? And I think what he would feel should happen here. That there may be an infiltration trench filled with crushed stone. Three quarter inch to two inch installed beneath the front or lake's facing roof rip line to reduce scouring of the soils there. Um, it would be best if it was designed to function as a French drain. Whereby there would be a perforated PVC pipe in the trench that could be daylighted to an adjacent preferably vegetated or otherwise stable area. I mean, this was it on a different site. The, the problem is you're right on the kind of the precipice.
But I think that can be achieved also. Now, portion of the building facing the lake is proposed to have a decker.
Yeah, just like it has now.
Just like it has now.
Yeah.
But I think that the eaves that go directly or feed directly to the ground again.
Underneath that deck.
That and somewhat under the deck. It can be extended to or only what's now in the existing driveway. Because the scope towards the lake is a little less than that area. And two, uh, it obviously is vegetated. To mature vegetation, so that can be achieved.
So what is this new, how many feet back will be, say, the depth from where the existing?
Pretty six to thirty nine.
Yeah. Yeah, it.
Thirty six to thirty nine.
Yeah.
And to forty two. And the other side with forty six. So it's but it is, we have to worry about.
The shoreline.
The, uh, yeah, the proposed new one, at, at the greatest extent, again, it it's somewhat dependent upon the shore. Because the, the shore is not a straight line. But the greatest is going to be forty feet, forty two feet.
Forty two feet.
And the west would be thirty nine. Whereas currently it's only thirty six feet. So, uh, in the rear part of the building would go to sixty one feet.
About, to about a three foot difference, is that?
Yeah, but it's also the porch area.
Yeah.
On both buildings. So, you know, you have a place to put the water.
Yeah.
From that anyway.
And because we're pulling it forward, it would be able to direct it to that section of the driveway.
Definitely shedding the water towards the old driveway, to the driveway side.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Even if it's in a French drain or something.
Right, yeah.
Mechanical ways to get it there.
Yeah, I, I mean, it's because they're essentially building on the contour.
Right. It's right on the flat spot of the contour.
Yeah, you can bring, sculpt the pipe.
Everything that way.
To go to the section below the driveway.
And the current camp has a holding tank, doesn't it?
Yeah, actually, what's your waste disposal?
That is an old fashioned septic system.
So like my understanding is you're gonna get a new system, a new one that you're pumping up to hit all the
Yeah, the, uh, you, with the packer, you had an H H E two hundred.
Yeah.
That was designed from twenty twenty one.
Through a wheat field and that's gonna be.
That's gonna be up on top of the hill. Yeah, and if you look at the H H E two hundred, even the note on the plans, they have a size to pump. That's plumber can, yeah, once, once again, go for the plumbing from this. They'll have that all size now.
So do we have a, a motion finding? Do you have a question first, Ray?
Yes, sir. Where the building is gonna be set back further. We're gonna have exposed ground from the old building. So I guess we can probably make it a condition of approval on relative to the vegetation.
Right.
It's gonna have to take place.
Well, I think the first motion would be to find that building, the new building as shown on the plan would be set back to the fullest practical extent. By moving it above three feet. You have a motion for that? Don't move. Here's her second.
Second.
All in favor of, of making that finding? Okay. And then the next thing would be a motion to approve with conditions? Conditions would be
revegetate the area that is exposed from the building.
And also to, um, erosion control measures. To reduce the runoff, which would include some type of, uh, infiltration under the one portion of the building. Directing it away from the lake.
Dave, I suggest you use lake side, side of the building versus front.
Yeah, lakeside.
Run somewhere.
Yeah, okay. That's correct. And then, of course, we have to have, um, post-construction photos.
Or, or at least a water plan somewhere so they can see where, where they're treating the water.
Yeah.
Because it's a site suspicious, suspicious, uh, location. So wherever they do it, it should be shown where, where it is, it's underground. I don't know how you're gonna do it yet, so.
Yeah.
We can't.
We have to work with the contractor when they start.
That's why I say so a post one will be suffice, put it with the file.
Yeah, I suggest you have an as-built survey done. Yeah.
That, that would absolutely show it, yeah.
My suggestion to the board is an as-built survey be completed. Once the construction or at least the exterior and site construction is completed. It don't need to have the interior completed.
But you need the exterior.
The exterior, once the foundation is in place and the drains and that are put in place.
David, am I understanding that we don't need a pre-instruction photograph? Photographs?
Yeah, I already submitted.
Yeah, okay.
Those have been submitted.
Somewhere in your application, I don't know who wound up with them, but I submitted about six, seven photographs.
Yeah. I've seen them, so they're around somewhere.
Okay.
Now, sometimes, Dave, you had asked that there be some type of showing the former location? I mean, is that this?
I think, I think with a post survey, though, you're gonna have it.
Okay. I mean, there's not a lot of room there.
There isn't a lot.
Really not a lot of room.
But I do think that obviously watershed will appreciate having a post survey showing where the treated water is.
Yeah.
In, in the right direction, yeah.
Okay. But do we have a motion to approve with our standard conditions with the post exterior site as-built plan? Then survey. Then the, uh,
Water treatment.
Off first control measures. It would include some type of infiltration trench along the front of the building. Lakeside. We have a motion for that, to approve it?
Don't move.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor? We'll get a decision together and send it out?
You've got me to decision, I'm sorry. Because I know you'd be that reported.
Yeah, I'll have to write something up on that. May take me a couple of weeks to get. May take me a couple of weeks to get that, because I'm. Not working next week, but.
I'll try to get it to the original subdivision.
Right.
File, yeah.
Yeah.
We know exactly what you mean.
The conditions, yes. So we'll have a written decision. Which. Typically, if you have someone like Paul representing you, we send it to Paul. He will forward it to you or we. We make or we'll send two out. It'll just take a week or more.
Whatever you do in the most.
Yeah.
Your thirty-day period starts today anyway.
That's what I wonder.
Yeah.
Okay.
It doesn't have to wait for the decision. It starts today.
Okay, so the letters didn't go out yet to the.
The butters should have got letters.
Did they get letters?
Should have.
Okay, so they have thirty days.
They have thirty days from tonight.
From tonight.
Yeah.
Okay.
We know who the butters.
Yes, yeah.
Oh, yes, on the list that I gave you.
Yes.
It could be anybody. It doesn't have to be the butter. I mean, anybody in the town can appeal it. It just, usually it's in a butter.
In some cases, people go to the butters and get a statement. That they're satisfied.
Okay.
And they're not going to appeal the planning board decision, and that would. Speed up the time that the code enforcement officer, because you're getting, so after you get our decision, you get a building permit. But he can't give you a building permit until that.
And I think that's changed now.
Has a problem.
It's, it's anybody in the world can do an appeal. So everybody in the world would have to sign that letter. So it's thirty days. It's thirty days.
We typically don't worry too much about anyone. I mean, they have to show an interest. It's really up to Andy what he wants to do.
Yeah.
Okay. So we'll get you that decision and.
Yeah. Okay.
All right. Go. Then. We have Clara with Asset Two LLC. So we had a site visit a week ago. And Bill Monaco from Carbon Sea Watershed was there. So he, he sent me an email. And I think it's just what he had said to you. While we were there. Is that he was suggesting an infiltration trench. Filled with crushed stone. Installed beneath the front or lake-facing roof drip line. To reduce scouring of the soils there. It might not be necessary, but as I mentioned, it would be best if it was designed to function. As a French drain. Whereby there would be a perforated PVC pipe in the trench. That would be daylighted to an adjacent. Preferably vegetated or otherwise stable area. Where it would not represent a source of erosion. Also, I mentioned that it would be good to plant some ground cover vegetation. Undered bushes or other low-lying native plants between the newly positioned structure and the shoreline. And I think you had mentioned, you're talking with Audubon to kind of help you with that. I mean, it looks like. The way you've managed that site, you don't really have any lawn there now, which is great for the quality of the lawn there. So. The. And I think I passed it on to Darcy. Clara had given me a copy of the. Plan for removal of some of the trees. That are still damaged by. The storm or just by aging. So there are a number of trees that you'll be removing some.
Some, as we saw, were already gone.
And then some near the water, he wanted to wait until.
The one near the water, he feels safe taking it down and wants to drop it on ice.
Yeah.
And then there are two behind the shed that will have to come down to make place for that leach field.
The leach field is gonna be right behind.
Correct.
The current shed, and I think you said you're gonna move that shed.
Yeah, correct.
And our only concern is that it be. Ten feet from your butter. He's got a fence, I think, right along there. Uh. Do you have that planned there, Dave?
Yep.
And that shows moving it back, how many feet? Oh, the building.
At nineteen and it goes to about forty-two. That's.
And the.
I don't know if you have. Were you there the other night? You came the other night to the site visit?
I, not the site visit, I came another.
Okay, well, I have a, I have a better drawn plan.
Oh, okay. Nineteen-five to forty-two.
Yeah. I think it's still led.
Nineteen-five to forty-two.
This is what I gave them the other night when they came.
Oh, perfect, okay. I'll replace this.
We just made a clearer, better measure.
Oh, it's still nineteen to forty-two.
Yeah.
Questions from the board?
A French drain with a pipe in it now, according to the new, oh, it's have to, well, it's been in existing for a while. That has to go to a rock-lined, open trench. It can't be just the vegetation.
Okay.
So you have to put riprap.
Around it.
Around it, so it will flow out onto riprap, not to, and not touch soil.
So I can't visualize where that would be.
I don't know where it's gonna be either. I mean, it's gonna be up to.
Because he told us.
Whoever's you doing your erosion control to figure it out.
What he said to us was a, was a rock-filled trench.
But with a pipe in it.
That's, yeah, that sounds like it's preferred.
So with the pipe in it, it changes everything, because the pipe now is a hard piece of. Structure that has to be terminated someplace, or has to terminate into a visual rock line. DEP, in their infinite wisdom, wants to be able to, not that they have the manpower, to go there and take a look and see what's coming out of this pipe.
If anything.
If anything.
So my question is, is that, it sounded like from this email, that was preferably but not required.
No, what I'm saying is, he put preferably. What I'm saying, it is required, because it's state required. So he just didn't say it, but it is state required that it goes to, it's the same thing that we've been doing all along. So. I don't want you to get misled.
So I'm just trying to be real clear. The pipe is required, or if you have a pipe, the drainage is required?
If he's requiring a pipe, then, then the next step is it has to go to a.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm wanting to be clear. Is he requiring a pipe?
Oh, let's read that again.
Just want to make sure I tell my per, my contractors the right thing.
Well, he said. It might not be necessary. But as I mentioned, it would be best if it was designed to function as a French drain.
So thing is, is does she have the room?
She has the room to do it.
Well, it goes toward, it would look to me that that has to go toward.
Has to go to daylight and dump into like a riprap bowl.
Is it gonna go toward? It can go towards the water.
Okay.
It can go towards the water. That's not, that's not the issue. The issue is that it has to be towards, if it goes towards the water, it has to be visible in a rock-lined trench and still have enough. Place in front of it for the water to dissipate before it hits the, the water. Now, that's up to whoever's your. Your guy to do it.
Question is, do, do we have to do it, or is it preferable?
Well, it. It's probably appropriate. Right, I mean, and you're, you know, it sounds like you folks are all stewards of that pond. And unfortunately, there are some people that over the years. Have probably done things that they shouldn't have done. That haven't helped the water quality.
I see it right next door, yes.
I didn't say it, yeah. We all think it, but.
You know, and so as Dave's saying, it can go toward the lake. I know the. Your other family camp is right, pretty close.
Yeah, yeah.
And.
See, the trouble is, you, the law is that you have to maintain and treat all water coming from your property. So it can't go on to somebody else's property, even.
Even my sister's.
Even your sisters, because it could eventually be two different people.
So they're very, well, I'm trying to just visualize it, because they're very narrow lots, both of them. And, and the lay of the land is such that it's downhill from.
So, yeah, that's the problem. That's the problem we're facing. You know, once I looked at it, I said, you know, how are we gonna treat this?
So even being innovative, you don't have to take it from one point and have it total go the other way.
You could have blew out falls.
And go.
You know, and split the water. If that's what he decides, whoever it is that's doing it.
So at the end of, you have your rock-lined trench with the pipe in it.
Correct.
And each end would have like a little gully that's rock-lined.
That is correct.
Correct.
That it, you know, so it doesn't have to be like a big.
No, no, no.
Just a little thing. Okay.
It has to be able, so if the water doesn't stream, water at the end of this rock line, it has to disperse.
So some kind of little gully.
What, they call it like a rock bowl or something like that. It's made out of riprap. It's big-sized rocks with some crushed stone.
Holds water on a heavy rain and then slowly dissipates.
Through the soil.
Okay, now I, I think I'm seeing it better.
Yeah. Yeah, it's just that this site is so, it's so narrow.
Yeah.
It's just so narrow.
They would. If they were to use a pipe. And the width of the crush rock would be narrower.
It could be narrower, because you don't have to treat the water there. It's, it's a pipe with holes in it, so water does come out of it along the way, but. It doesn't have to be this big thing.
Okay.
You know, I don't want to say it, but personally, I, I thought that that's wrong. I think it should be all stone, so it has a place to flow, not a directed flow. I would have liked to have seen it disperse as it's coming off the roof.
That's what I understood when he was there.
Rather than try to.
Have a rock.
Taint it into a pipe, that it all gonna go to two, one, two with three sites.
What about a gutter, having a stone drip edge, but having a gutter and having it pitch in two different ways? So some, it goes, you know, most of it goes one way and the other portion goes the other way.
You're gonna have the same problem.
That's the same problem. Then you're directing water again.
It might, it sounded like when he was there, he was asking for just the trench filled with stone at the drip line. And that's what Nathan, my contractor, said he has done before. And, and the guy from Havassee said, yeah.
I would think if it was deeper and it was like, say, say your overhang of the roof is a foot, maybe go two feet with the drip line, it's crushed stone, and a little bit deeper, maybe. You know, foot and a half, couple, couple of feet.
That would, that would do the same thing. I think that would probably do the same.
Had in mind that the conversation.
That would probably do better, and it would disperse more evenly instead of being shot out each end.
That's correct. Well, we need to say what I'm gonna put in this decision.
I would say to treat the water as to not create a rift to the lake and let whoever's doing it. Do it the correct way. Because if, if. There's a rift to the lake, then you would be in violation of the decision. Does that make sense?
Yeah. So we would say EG, for example.
An oversized rock. Drip line trench. It would be apropos. I don't want to put words into Nathan. He knows what to do, you know, just let him.
That's what he said. He had done another camp.
He's done a lot of camps.
Right, a wide thing that was rock-filled along the drip line.
If he has a question, that'll call.
Okay, so if that's okay, that's what we were talking about.
Correct.
I don't know, who's your third party?
So treat. Water from roof. So as not to create rift to lake, for example. An oversized.
Crushed stone.
Drip line infiltration trench beneath the lakes, the lakeside roof line.
lined with fabric.
Does that?
Should do.
Does that sound?
You can do both sides, if that would help too, the both sides of the house.
You can do both sides, yeah.
I'll treat that water before.
You treat the water before it gets down around the corner, yeah.
Yeah, in backside roof line. So treat water so as not to create rift to lake, for example. Place. An oversized drip line infiltration trench beneath the lakeside roof line. And the rear roof line.
Correct, to catch all roof water.
Yeah, to catch all roof water.
Or generated water.
Okay. So.
That seems better to me than gutters or something that rounds water. Like the other, my sister's camp does have gutters, and the gutters come down and the water just raises up the gutter.
That's what they're trying to get rid of.
Yeah. And.
Plus they collect debris and freeze and back the ice up in the winter.
Sitting out the gutter. Yep.
Are you gonna use the same shed or will it be a new shed?
It's a new shed.
Okay. Replace. Existing.
I had said to you that I, we've gotten quotes from the Amish folks in the middle sprint, an eight by eight.
Yeah, existing. Shed with eight by eight.
That's the one we're considering. It was either eight by eight or eight by twelve. I think eight by twelve, still smaller. The current one is ten by ten.
Okay.
We could do either, but I think.
So either eight by twelve or.
Either eight by twelve is what they have. They don't have any, they don't have an eight by ten.
All right, by eight by, with eight by twelve.
Twenty of them.
Shed.
They have like twenty sheds built.
Set back. At least. Ten feet.
Couldn't allow.
A lot.
So the one, the one question is, if we take it ten feet from the fence, it gets it fairly close to where the. Tank and leach field would be.
I don't think that's a problem. It's not a problem.
Okay.
It's not gonna have a foundation. It's gonna be sitting on.
Move it instead of towards the fence the other way.
Right.
The shed isn't gonna have a foundation. It's just gonna be sitting on blocks or something else.
You're fine.
Pressure-treated skids or something like that towards.
Okay.
And then submit post-construction. Photographs, like we want to have pictures of what, what it looks like when it's finished. Okay. So they did get. Think, I emailed you these, didn't I, Darcy?
Yes, I printed them. I haven't got them in the file.
If anyone wants.
So.
And then follow the. So then.
So I got waivers from my butters, because I'm, the understanding from the last meeting.
Yeah.
Was that we could go ahead and proceed if I got waivers.
And if the code enforcement office is happy with it.
Right, because Nathan's eager to start to get it framed in before the winter, so he could work on it this winter and. I could get a downlist and go, he can start working.
So we vegetate area. Of former. Building.
Correct.
Using. Robs. Plantings.
Maybe.
Native, I think. Using.
Bonwell advised me.
Native plantings.
Like the project I did with them in Lewiston, it's the brass, they had a little growing clover. And were sage. With blueberries.
Last house I did. Last house I did, two point six million dollar house, no grass. It's all clover. Huge lawn.
It would never even be a mow it.
It's all clover.
Is that the, uh, Ian?
Yeah.
What's his name?
You don't have to mow it or anything.
You don't have to do anything. And it came in perfect.
And the clover regenerates the soil. So.
When you drove in, it looks like it's grass. And when you get out of the car, you see, oh no, it's clover.
And then you gotta follow the.
The way flow and.
Well, right.
So follow plan for pre-removal and replacement in other condition.
If we have to plant that six trees of a certain size and variance, maybe something like that.
This is what I got. Treat water so has not to create a rift to lake. For example, place oversized drip line with trench infiltration trench beneath the lakeside roof line and rear roof line to catch all roof water. Place existing shed with eight by twelve shed.
Oh, it'll be eight by eight is my guess.
All right, with eight by eight or eight, you know.
Eight by eight or.
How many sizes?
Yeah, it'll be slower, smaller than ten by ten.
Okay.
Just the current one.
Yeah. Um. Okay.
Eight by ten would be perfect. They don't make that.
Yeah. Um. Why don't we say no, no greater than eight by twelve? Yeah, no greater than eight by twelve.
It's stuck with two hundred and eighty feet anyway.
Yeah, um, step back at least ten feet to lot line. We vegetate area of former building using native plantings. Follow plan for removal of damaged trees and replacement, placement trees and submit post-construction photograph. You'll get a written decision. And so will the code enforcement officer. I'll try to, I might have some time this weekend to get those together. Problem is I have to have it notarized.
So when can I go see?
After you have the decisions.
Steve, we need to vote on it.
Yes. Motion?
I make a motion except all the conditions. Okay.
Second. All in favor?
Seconded.
Right.
No.
My demolition guy is ready. On his schedule for next week said, I can join next week if you get a permit. So.
We'll try to get it done.
Thank you so much. When it comes by mail or email or?
Yeah, usually it gets mailed out. Copy of it to you and the original goes to the town office.
So I gotta tell him not next week.
Well.
I gotta tell him not next.
It might be hard because it, you know, we have to write, I have to write this up. I have to get, you know, proofread it, notarize it. One vacation next week. So that's my problem. Try to get it as soon as I can.
You can get the memo. It's canceled.
What's canceled?
Your vacation.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Curious. Is there a reason why she couldn't get a demo permit and get that moving?
If he's willing to give it to her.
I think, I think he, he would do that.
Since now that we've got to.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't say why not. Yeah. It's gonna be demoed one way or another.
If somebody appeals that they have to, he has to post a stop work order. So whatever they've done is wasted money if the appeal goes through. It's really up to them if they want a chance at. That's the problem. That's what an appeal is.
Yeah, you've got letters from abutters.
I got letters from all the.
Which is good because those are the ones usually, usually, but there can be someone on the road that, or somebody.
Well, the thing is, is right now the building's a hat. It's gonna be demoed.
Same issue.
Yeah, I know. Yeah.
Gonna be demoed anyways. So, you know.
Just the clock starts ticking for two years.
Yeah.
For your two-year window for the grandfather.
Yeah. So I, I talked to Andy next week, you know, tell him, you weren't, you know, I'll try to, I'll email him. I'll try to get the decision, but I can't, I can't promise.
Okay.
Uh, that I can get this done right away. Depends what happens the next couple of days.
Only I'll run up and notarize it for you.
Yeah, I can meet you. I can meet you for coffee at. I can meet you for coffee.
Things you learn.
Thank you for your help.
Yeah.
Sam.
Okay.
We too.
Yeah.
I mean, we.
Good luck.
Making it work.
Very good. Thanks for your patience with us. So a couple of other things, um. I, and I think we circulated that by email. We heard from Novell. Dave.
We're fine.
Well, I can. Um, Novell has filed a revised plan. It's the whole file. For Novell?
Yeah, that's all I should find.
Yeah, okay. It should be a big plan.
I know. It was. It was a binder. It said Novell on it and I have no idea where it was.
Um, so anyway, the gist of it is they're going with another type of panel, which is apparently more efficient. So they're actually shrinking the size of the development area. Um, so they want to come in to the September meeting. I, even though it's a smaller project, I still think we have to, is it Novell? The one behind those barns, pot barns. Uh, so the, the plan is slightly smaller. And because they're using different panels that I guess are available.
So a change of the approval.
Yeah, so you know, it has to come before us. And even though it's smaller and people shouldn't complain, I think we have to send notices to abutters. Especially since we have the abutter on the other side who is hoping that they're not gonna do anything.
Right, right, right.
So.
Plan. Question. If, how much of a change, um, does this mean? And is there a way that, I mean, I remember when we had the discussions with them and we talked about buffers and all of that, and they were agreeable, but they came in before the new ordinance. If this is a new plan, can we apply the ordinance?
Well, it's not really a new plan.
Well, that's, yeah, that's my question.
An amendment to the plan.
It's an amendment. So.
That's a tricky one. I'm not sure. Cause if it's gonna be a new plan, then the neighbor, the one across the street could say,
Yeah.
well, no, I'm next.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
So I think they're gonna call this an amendment to an existing approval and not go down that road. But we can surely have.
It's sort of a technical thing because, as I say, they're shrinking it.
Yeah, it's to our benefit.
It's to the benefit probably of everyone. But I, I, I kind of thought about it and said, I don't think we just want them to come in without us sending notices.
So Steve.
We'd be opening ourselves up to a.
Our new plan would have a fit.
So there'd be a new fee, right? Cause you gotta send out.
Well, and yeah.
Yeah.
And I, see, I was trying to find, I didn't have a list in, in the papers I had of who the abutters were. Um, cause I was gonna try to tell them that the fee would be like, I don't know, seventy-five dollars, a hundred dollars plus plus the, um.
Is that the Novell binder?
There's a Novell binder.
It's not Novell, is it? I'm not sure it is.
One of the ones, one that was, was had just, they don't climb it in that building anywhere.
This is not on the road. Yeah.
It's because Dave Shaw stole.
No, no, no. This is, no, this is the other one across the street.
Okay.
This is not Novell. I didn't steal it. Borrowed.
Is there a list of abutters in that?
In this? No. There's no, you know, I have this, the decision, there's a building permit where they put, put panels on that red barn.
Well, that's not, yeah, that's something different. That wasn't part of our approval.
Right.
Um.
They even need, if they're gonna put panels on top of the barn, is that?
No, that, that, see, that's not, that's just the owner did that of, of his building. So those buildings weren't part of this plan.
Right.
But when we had the site visit, he said he was gonna do that.
Yeah.
He was putting panels on his.
Well, we're gonna get a new plan anyway, because it's gonna be a different size. So we are, we'll, we'll just ask for the world and get what we get.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, I'd like, again, I remember that he was very minimal to doing the buffer on the roadside and.
They didn't look at the decision. I have the.
No.
The vital list wouldn't do this.
No. There's buffer on.
Yeah, I got the decision. Let's see what I got.
Because it's not.
I don't know why.
Doesn't come from the new rights.
It wasn't before me. It might have been before me. That's why.
Let me just see what we got on this. That I put this.
Can we talk about Menkowsky tonight?
Yeah, we're talking about that. That's a corn. That's the other one. I think I must have put this under, but. Finally, system.
I put them in Kowski forward too.
Yeah, they, I didn't know whether they were gonna show up tonight.
The application doesn't say anything about a deck. No shed, no deck, no garage.
This. Name DG or is that the other one? Uh.
I did the.
That's a decision? No, I was more looking to see it's a double check. Well, I may have a booklet at home. I was going by what I had in the, the only thing I have in my office is whatever I put in my computer. Well, I had a car, I have a car with a decision. But I was trying to figure out what to tell them for a fee. Was those letters are how much each now?
Ten bucks fees pretty much.
Yeah. Um. But, you know, I was hoping we had the list of abutters to make it easier, but there's nothing in.
Nope.
Five hundred feet, there'd be at least what, probably five or six of others, I would say.
Oh, there's more. Quite a few.
Yeah.
Because it's within five hundred feet.
You don't have to cross the street.
Right.
So.
Across South Monmouth.
A lot of it is Andy Smith.
Yep.
Uh. And, you know, there was Scott Beasley who's been coming in on, one on the other side. There's some other schedules across the road.
In what, ten or twelve?
Yeah.
I think you had a dozen.
Yeah, say, say a hundred fifty dollars in the cover, I guess. A hundred and twenty-five.
I might say two hundred total.
Yeah.
For the amendment.
Round numbers are easy.
Yeah. Um. Okay. So I'll, I'll see what I got at home. If not, I'll say to them, we can't find the list of abutters you provided with us before. I said, I don't like coffee. Then we got one from Maven Ridge. Was that Menkowsky?
Yes.
So a few years ago, apparently, I guess we approved relocation of a camp. They seem to imply that we had approved a deck on it, but we didn't find any approval of a deck. They wanted to come in tonight and I said, well, you really kind of missed our deadline. Cause I got the email, I think on Tuesday, Monday to come in. But tonight.
Was that a, a relatively new building or is that one of the existing ones on the board?
The, was the building in two thousand fourteen that they relocated a house, uh, uh, away from the water for about three feet, I think was the final. It was, uh, it's been in violation since I issued the permit in two thousand fourteen. In two thousand fifteen, it went into violation. They didn't notify the planning board of an extension. They didn't notify the planning board in seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three. Every year, they were in BEP violation for as long as I was CEO uh, for bringing, uh, this huge excavator down to the water doing.
Well, I think they'd have, still have it there. Because usually on Friday nights, Saturdays and Sundays, they're working it.
Within twenty-five feet of the water.
Yeah.
I don't ever remember a deck. That's why I wanted to look at it. Because as far as I was concerned, there was no deck. They were in violation of building there. I renewed the permit based on the town manager said to renew the permit every year while we were fighting with DEP. So I was set for a fight tonight when I found out that they were coming.
What's Sunday morning, Chris?
I left the town office the week after our town manager told me to forget the violation. And Linda said to me, we're gonna drop this. I said, then you're dropping me too. And she said, okay. So that's the reason I left that town office after nineteen, twenty years was of Menkowsky.
If you look on their application here, it says new residents thirty by fifty, one story, new garage, not, not applicable. Any others building, NA. Doesn't say anything about a deck.
Hmm.
Anything. There's no picture, drawing.
It's just a, just a rectangle on the, on the set.
Let's see if I can find her. She had a different last name than Menkowsky.
This is, what's that noise? I said, oh, that's the don't try to live with it stone and fill.
See if I can find this.
Anna Menkowsky is a Monmouth name, you know.
There were two brothers, right?
There were two brothers and the father across the street, next to one of the brothers on that old island. Walk to the right. That was dad's mom, mom, dad's house.
Well.
It's a laser.
This week I got.
There's some other beauties down there.
Yeah. Oh, and she cries every time I went there. Here, this would come down. And she would raise her voice at me.
Did you bring a towel?
No, I've actually had a recorder in my pocket so I could record her conversation. Same thing to the assessor.
Oh, I read that.
The assessor just said, okay, we'll just make it this number instead of this number. I was doing it in your favor. Wouldn't let her rent.
That's okay.
Okay. I showed the assessor the pictures. Say.
We, we're not, we're lying. Just saying.
I don't like that.
And. So she would say.
Oh, yeah.
We say stuff, but I know.
I'm just trying to find that either.
I forgot what you're saying.
About this night.
If it was Monday.
It was Monday. Doris Hammond, Herman, Herman.
But she's not even a Minkowski anymore.
We want to be put on the docket to Thursday's meeting. We were trying to get our deck on the house. It was previously approved ten years ago when we were building. And we would like it to get approved again. Thank you, David and Doris Minkowski. So I wrote and, and I sent her an application. Said you're gonna have to file a new application. So we'll see what happens. Well, that was, I think I covered everything. I did get, Dave, I did get, I told Dave I got a request. Someone to build, wanted to put a fence up and code enforcement sent it to go to the planning board, but it doesn't seem to be a planning board issue. Not in shore land, it's not commercially related.
The fence ordinance is under the shore land, uh, uh, under the planning board doctrine, in the book. So he thinks just because it's under there that it should have went to the planning board. I, I asked a couple times ago to get it involved and they didn't want to duplicate it. You know, when we wrote the ordinance. And it doesn't make sense. I mean, it's all part of.
It's a minor, yeah.
You know, it's the ordinance.
So that's that. I think that's all I got. There's no public, no victims involved, you know.
They could mostly do it during.
Have, have we heard anything from, uh, man who came in talking about. Out of Main Street, that fifty-five plus community. Remember that?
Last time I heard, I talked to Dawn, the like real estate lady and she said that there was, there.